Okay, welcome everybody to the Monday, October 28th Board Study Session. All Board members with the exception of Director Burnick are here. And our first order is to do the Oath of Office for our new Director Dan White. So, how do you want to go in the middle here?
Sure, that's right.
Oh, that radio is fine, okay. All right, so it is an honor that you were appointed to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the Oath of Office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a Director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and the other members of our school board in the position of being morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education of every student in our district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community, envisions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As Board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district towards fulfilling that vision that we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. And having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, I hereby ask you to raise your right hand and publicly affirm your commitment to the oath of office by repeating after me. I swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I swear that I will affirm the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board.
Discharge faithfully the duties of Office of School Board.
Of Independent School Board District or School District 719.
Of Independent School District 719.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Okay, next we have a public.
We're not going to decide nothing.
Oh, yes, you do. Good point. There you go. All right, going on to the forum, we have one forum speaker, and that is Allison Matthews or Mathies on the vote yes on the levy next week.
Hi, everyone. My name is Allison Mathies, and our family moved to Prior Lake in 2017. At the time, we combed the Twin Cities to determine where we wanted to raise our girls. A big piece to selecting our hometown was looking at school districts. I'm not sure we would have chosen PLSAS without the option for Spanish immersion. Fast forward seven years, we now have a seventh, fifth, and first grader at Hidden Oaks and at La Olada Lago Spanish immersion. I remember when I moved here, a good friend of mine living in Savage, a regular Republican voter and self-proclaimed fiscal conservative, told me about the upcoming referendum. She asked if she could put a vote yes signed in our yard because it would be a close and important vote. This was my first exposure to our district's referendum request. To this day, she votes Republican and also recently said to me, there is no better way I could spend my money than on our kids' education. I sense a level of broken trust in our district. Perhaps from years past, promises broken, bad decisions made. And I'm not here to argue the past. However, I am here to encourage a yes vote for this upcoming levy because I've reviewed the numbers, the need, as many of you have. I believe in the current proposals. I believe in our school board, I believe in Dr. Thomas, I believe in our educators, and I think it's time to give our district a real shot at the success that we all seem to want, but will cost money to create. Schools are not immune to inflation or rising labor costs. Our house, for example, has a proposed increase of about $800 per year. The inflationary factor, which I know some people are nervous about, is projected to be about 2% a year, which would be about $16 annually, if that's what the inflation rate ended up being. Communities thrive with solid public education systems. Homes have maintained high values in 719. As any Realtor will tell you, it matters. Home values are better and homes sell faster in great districts. Our great community includes many schooling choices. Private education, homeschooling, where parents can choose to spend a lot on curriculum if they choose to, and public education, which is the most viable and widely accessible option to ensure every student is given the opportunity to engage in their education with unique programs like Spanish immersion, MinCaps, Sage, with electives, with activities. And I won't pretend to know the ins and outs of public education finance. I have never walked a mile in the shoes of the people who work it day in and day out. I also invited Dr. Thomas to our house a couple of weeks ago for our friends and neighbors to hear directly from him. It's something he offered to all of us in the district, and I said, sure, I'll take him up on it. So he came over, and he's clearly working to build that trust that I believe we're looking for for the future. My husband commented that he's a very independent thinker and is clearly working to make things better for all students in 719. Lastly, I did a bit of my own research to see where our current levy spend falls as a percent of taxable home value. The current levy on our current house is 0.179% of the taxable market value. I also polled data from about a dozen neighboring districts, Eden Prairie, Lakeville, Maple Grove, Minnetonka. We are currently paying a much lower percentage than all of these districts that I polled. And if passed, our future levy spend would fall right in the middle of the bunch, very similar to what residents in Maple Grove and Minnetonka spend. If you bought a house today in Shakopee, Eagan, Farmington, or Apple Valley, your levy spend would already be higher than what our vote yes would do. So right now, I think we have a chance to move forward from our past and collectively improve funding for the things that our student population, teachers, and community desperately need to thrive.
Next, for the purpose and agenda, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Thomas.
Thank you Chair Franz, Board Directors. Tonight at our study session, as always, our opportunity to get engaged in key topical issues, more from exploratory and gain understanding, which may ultimately come back to you all for formal decisions in the future. So in the categories tonight, we are going to be going over some of our operations and enrollment and final budget update with regards to revised budget. We will engage in an academic retreat with not only some of the data, but also what is happening with the data and the actions that our staff are engaged in taking. We have a series of proclamations that we'll go through. And closing out tonight, we'll have a series of policies, namely 700s and 1600 policy to review for the board. So with that, Chair, I turn it back to you.
Okay, so the first item on our Oversight of Operations is the Enrollment Update and Final Budget by Director Frederickson.
Thank you Chair Franz, Directors. We included in your packet the enrollment update. We have the estimated, and we've seen this before, we presented this at prior board meetings, have the estimated of what we used for our budget as we built this last spring. And we had an estimate of 8,512 students. And as of October 1st, we have 8,616, which is 104 or more than what we had originally built into the budget. Most of those are at kindergarten, which is a good sign. We hope that as kindergartners come into the district, that they stay for the next 13 years throughout the whole system. So, moving on from that, we're looking at revising the budget for '24-'25, which I also have provided you. There is, changes in the budget are basically, we're increasing the revenue and expenses to reflect those 104 additional students. And then, as we looked at the community ed budget, they are anticipating significant amount more of KidsCo. So we're increasing the community ed revenue and expense budget. Other than that, there are no other revisions to the '24-'25 budget. This will appear on our next board meeting in November for approval. But I am willing to answer any questions at this point.
Tammy, on the revised budget worksheet that you gave, the increase in KidsCo tuition, it says original 8624-501. Is that supposed to be revised? Is that the revised number?
Yes.
It's revised?
Yes.
Okay, that's already up. No, that's what it is. You have a question?
I have a question. So if we added about 100, what, 104 kids, and that brought in revenue of $800,000, can you help me understand why expenses would increase by $800,000 if we already have some, you know, like standard things that we already pay for? Why is the number an equal expense increase versus trying to, I don't know?
So in this budget, and again, this is just a budget as we move forward, we are assuming that because we have 100 more additional students, that throughout this year, we will probably be needing some additional support staff. And we also have been seeing a rise in the number of special education students that we have. So anticipating some additional special education staffing needs. So we've just made the expenses equal to the additional revenue that we're anticipating. And again, we'll look at this in February, March, when we hit the final budget and see if we need to change that. But for now, that's the assumption we're making.
And is there any, with the 104 kids? I think the question I've received is like, and maybe, I don't know if this is appropriate now, but like, are they open enrollment kids? Are they, like, is there a difference in funding and like, no?
No, open enrolled, whether they're a district resident or open enrolled, it's the same funding formula. So for this purpose, we don't need to separate out open enrolled. These are the kids that are here right now, and they'll get the full funding.
Okay. If I were to piggyback on that question, is it, is it common practice to, when you're, when budgeting, to keep the increase the same, like the?
Expenses?
Yeah, the expenses. Is that, is that common?
Typically, you would, because again, additional kids usually come with additional needs.
Right.
So, you know, we could make other assumptions.
Sure.
But for now, for this purpose, we are going to assume that the amount that we're going to give in revenue, and again, it's not that much.
Right.
I mean, it's the equivalent of maybe eight teachers, that we may need some additional support staff. And again, as we're looking at increased enrollment in special education, those students always come with some additional staffing needs. So it's not, we can put it in different buckets, but it makes sense to keep the expenses increased at the revenue rate.
Thank you.
And I'll just share, in that stream of question that the two of you are asking, we're also mindful and watching. You know, just because we receive additional revenue, we're not running to find expenses, I want to be very clear about that. We do know that the needs of students coming into our school system over the past two years have accelerated. So we've baked in some of those assumptions there. But if we don't need that, we won't spend that. And so there will be a surplus that will hold back. But again, I think not planning for a surplus allows us then to be a little bit more mindful of how we can adjust the resources accordingly. And if the needs aren't there, that money goes back into the general, it's maintained in the general fund, so.
And it's fair to say that sometimes the needs exceed, so.
Sometimes the needs may exceed, and this, that does happen.
Right.
And so if we've allocated resources, and then we bring on a student who comes in perhaps maybe with a large service minute load, or we have a high academic load, then, or demand, then we would find ways to address that, you know, financially. So it's there, but we're not letting it burn a hole in our pocket to hurry and spend. We want to maintain those resources and only allocate where appropriate and when appropriate.
Thank you. So I have another question. We're talking about this year's budget, meaning like, we already know who these kids are as of October 1st. We already know how many teachers are needed. So help me understand when you're talking about assumptions, because we're talking about this year's budget, and we've already passed the October 1st date. So we would know a lot of, you know, like, doing anytime of budgeting, you're using your best guess, right? And I would think that that would be part of the equation of you would already know what the special needs funding is that comes with the kid, what the expenses are. So knowing that we're trying to cut back expenses so that we're not deficit spending, just wondering if that could be dialed back based on more data that you have?
So, so.
Maybe I'm missing that.
No, 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 I hear you. So we're not, we're not deficit spending. And I would say that some kids, we do know their needs. Some kids are kind of in the queue. We're watching. I'm going to a meeting on Wednesday dealing with a real challenging situation with one of our students that may end up needing additional support. That's to be determined. So it's, it's still, we just got out of first quarter. And so our staff are really just understanding what's beneath the waterline with some of our students. And then to your point, yes, some of our kids, we do know. Particularly those who might be newer. But Director Frederickson's point, many of these are also, many of the increase are in kindergarten. So there's a lot of screening and assessment and understanding to watch how they grow into becoming a student. Takes a little bit longer there compared to maybe if it's a male schooler.
And what I was referring to the staffing levels, sorry, do you want to try that?
Yeah.
So I guess I have a question as far as when will the numbers be baked? I mean typically, are we going to know by the end of November? January 1st? How does that, or does that usually shake itself off? You're really confident that expenses are going to be X, assuming no more students?
The October 1st child count is official the end of December. We have to report all these students in the MARS submission at the end of, I think it's December 28th, and we have to do the report. So once those are all submitted, then it's just a matter of tracking. Enrollment changes every day, you have kids coming in and out. And right now, we're kind of at that point where we're looking at 15-day withdrawals. There may be some kids that have been out for 15 days that we have to now have to take off the rolls. There may be additional kids coming in. And special ed is kind of all over the place when they do come in or don't come in. There's other needs that we identify, especially for the younger kids in special ed, may have support, support staff that we need. So, well, this is a revised budget. We typically can look in January or February for a final budget. And we can make, still make adjustments for a final budget. At the same time, we're also building the '25-'26 budget with some assumptions that we need to bake in.
And Director White, I'll just add, you know, I think about mid-November, we've gone through, you know, all of our assessments. You'll hear a little bit about that sequence this evening. And I think our enrollment, albeit does ebb and flow each day, the majority of who we have for the duration of the year is going to be fairly locked and loaded at that point. You will still potentially have some anomalies. You know, there's, there is a charter school in close proximity that's in a bit of a challenge right now. That may have impacts on enrollment based upon whatever happens with that particular school. And so if that becomes a sudden surge, obviously, that's something that we'll have to address. But typically, you know, within the next couple of weeks, we're, we're kind of plateaued. So we kind of know, we're planned out, so we kind of know, you know, who's in our classrooms, the types of needs that we see through our initial quarter-one assessments, and start the triage, that scaffolding support for our kids.
That's kind of what I was thinking, I know you have reporting dics you have to do, but inside the building, you'll know a lot.
Inside, we're, I think we're planning out here.
Questions? You see that the revised resolution, is that something we're going to vote on at the next board meeting?
Yeah.
And you're not anticipating any major changes between now and the future?
Not at this point.
Okay. I did have one question because I, we've been through the several cycles now, and you have an assumption based upon a percentage, based upon a number of students, et cetera. But we do usually just get, I've never seen anything more than a 1% to 2% standard deviation overall by the end of the year. And some of that also comes in, like you said, from changes. But in general, when we don't get this large of an increase in kindergarten, we do see a slight percentage of attrition throughout the year, usually from the later grades. But because our later grades last year stayed pretty stable, and our growth this year is front-loaded in kindergarten, are you not anticipating as much of a deviation in that? Can you speculate at this time?
Right now, I don't, I mean, the way that it's played out so far in the first, what, month and a half, I don't think it will have huge deviations. I mean, pretty, should be pretty set. I mean, there's always going to be families that are moving in mid-year or moving in, moving out, making different choices as they get kind of in the cadence of the school year. But I think this is pretty consistent what it's going to look like.
Okay, good. No other questions, we'll go on to the data review with Director Frederickson and Director Edwards.
Who wants to sit here if you can look at the?
Yeah.
Does she need help? Do you need me to advance?
She's got it.
We got the clearer.
Got the clearer. All right, Chair Franz, members of the board, thank you. This has been somewhat of a long time coming. We've been talking about having an academic retreat along this timeframe here. And I look forward to tonight's conversation with all of you. We certainly have data that we, that becomes available to us throughout every school year. And we're going to take a look at some of that data, give some overview data. And after we do so, we're then going to dive deeper into not the data, but our practices around that. And we have a team of folks that you'll be hearing from tonight, representing a variety of roles. And I'll introduce them as they come forward. But we're going to have our curriculum specialist speaking. We're going to have a classroom teacher, two classroom teachers at the elementary level, an administrator from the high school, and a classroom teacher at the high school as well, that can speak to more specifically what this data tells us and the adjustments that we make throughout in the spirit of our focus on improvement. And that is really what we're going to be sharing with you tonight. So look forward to the conversation. And without further ado, I'll initially kick it off with turning it over to Dr. Sombush.
Good evening, Chair Franz, members of the board. This packet is quite lengthy. I tried to put everything in there that you could possibly want. But due to the, just organization of the presentation, I have kind of the high-level overview of all the data points in the beginning. And then it's followed with data appendices that talk about all of our individual breakdowns of our data. So I'm going to go over those high-level pieces. We'll hear from some teachers. And then if you have any questions on any of the other pieces, I'm happy to give those a shot. Not user error, okay. Ah, there you go. Okay, so the high-level data overview will be MCA data, FastBridge fall data. I'll kind of explain why I'm presenting fall data. ACT data, this is very, very hot off the press from the state comparison report. AP data, advanced placement exams at the high school level. And then Apple, which is our Spanish language testing. And then the MCAs dive into grade level and subgroup reports on MCAs as well as FastBridge fall data by grade level. Okay, so FastBridge data. Fall FastBridge data, FastBridge is our screener, our academic screener. It is a formative assessment, which means we use that to drive instruction. It is not a summative assessment, like an MCA tells us kind of the conclusion at the end of the year. The purpose of the FastBridge assessment is to identify students who may not be on track with foundational skills. Those are the skills they need in order to access grade level content. It's not a measure of standards. That is what MCAs measure, as well as in-class assessments. It's really focusing on those foundational skills that students need in order to access the information that they get in the classroom. The main use is to plan for differentiated instruction. This fall window tells us kind of our baseline of where we're starting. And then any student that needs additional support in math or reading, they will be potentially, depending on their other data, recommended for intervention. As a reminder, we have early reading and A-reading. Those are the two major subtests that we look at on a regular basis. Early reading is only for kindergartners and first graders. A-reading is for grades two and up. The ninth grade is not on here because we have not, we've not had the same historic experience with ninth grade, and we can talk about that if you want to later. But this is kind of showing that across our grades two through eight, we have a pretty consistent starting basis over the last three falls. Just to orient you to this, the purple on the top means that the student is generally on track or at low risk. If they're at pink or on the bottom, that means that they're at risk for not being able to meet those, that grade level content. So you can see that we have 72 and 71% across the three years, very consistent in our A-reading screener. For early reading, we have a little bit of, with only two grade levels, it's going to be a little bit more of an unstable number. But there you can see that we started fall two years ago at 61%, then last year at 66, and this year at 60. Some of that has to do with the cohort of students that we're receiving as kindergartners. So for math, MCA, so math is our, MCA is our summative assessment. This is our lot, our high-level view of change over time in terms of students meeting standards or not meeting standards. Across all of our grades here, we went from 58.9 to 58.0. So we have a 0.9% drop there from 2023 to 2024. For reading, we went down 0.1%. So that would be, basically, that is staying the same, 59.8 to 59.7. And you can see that the state comparison, that line is stable as well. So the green is our Prior Lake Savage area schools line, and the blue is the state line. The exclamation point just shows that those numbers are not stable because it was a pandemic-related measure there. For science, we're seeing a bit of a decline from 49.7 to 48.4. So about one and a half percentage points down from the spring of 2023. For ACT data, this one's a little bit complicated because as soon as students take the ACT, and our district-administered ACT, we do get a report on what those scores are. However, as you probably know, there's a lot of students that take it multiple times. So really, we wait until the state report comes out because that gives us the overview of where the data. because that gives us the overview of where the data is, our year-to-state average. And it also allows students to, for them to take the number that they have over the course of their test-taking, that higher number there. So here you can see our students from last year, the seniors, the class of 2024, their average ACT score was a 21.8. So here in the blue is the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools and in green is the state. So the state went down by .1 and our PLSAS went up by .1. For AP data, this is an area where we've seen a lot of really amazing growth. Here across the top, you can see the total number of AP students that have taken AP, students that have taken AP classes over the last five years. And then the numbering exams that have been taken. Then we also track the number of students who have three or above, which is typically what you need to get college-level credit for that AP class. And then the percentage of AP students with that three or above. One thing to point out here is that typically, if you're, I mean, it's something to celebrate for sure because not only are we increasing the percentage of students with three or above, but the number that are taking them is increasing as well. So I think it's, you know, if the percentage is going up, but you're being more selective on who's taking the test, you know, that is maybe not as good of an indicator. But to have both of them going up at the same time, I think, is a real cause for celebration at the high school level. So we have more students taking AP courses, more students taking the test, and a higher percentage of students passing the test. A new piece of data that we wanted to put forward is Apple data. It's the assessment of performance for proficiency in languages. We give this assessment a few times throughout the trajectory of students that are in immersion programming. And over, this is our students who were in their eighth, in eighth grade last year. So now they're currently ninth grade. This is that cohort that's kind of paving the way here. You can kind of see their scores in the four different areas. So there's listening and speaking, presentational writing, listening and reading. And you can see how they scored in their eighth-grade assessment as compared to that national average. This is the fifth-grade data over time. So this shows the national average and then Prior Lake Savage Area Schools and how they scored on the different subcomponents of the Apple test. Again, the same listening, writing, or speaking, writing, listening and reading. It kind of ebbs and flows a little bit. I mean, there's, you know, different cohorts in different contexts that we know that have happened throughout those years. But in general, our trend lines are showing pretty consistent scores over time. Okay, so that's the high-level flyover and...
We'll be pulling Gwen Walden up first, our, the curriculum specialist. Gwen serves in that role right here. I think we're going to adjust and we'll put the name tag down so people don't get confused that it's not Julie Vernon who's there. But we'll dive into some deeper conversations around what we do with this data and how it impacts our work that we do and various teams that come together. And again, Gwen is currently our K-12 curriculum specialist. She was formerly the K-5 curriculum specialist, but through the budget reduction process last year, we streamlined that position and expanded her role. So Gwen has been doing a phenomenal job in the first few months of the school year to gain a deeper understanding of that six through 12, but has worked in our district for many years. First as a classroom teacher and then as a curriculum specialist supporting our K-5. So she's going to focus the original part of the conversation around that. And again, later in the conversation, we'll bring some representatives from the high school to speak to that topic we just discussed with regard to the AP testing and our positive changes in that regard. So I'm going to turn it over to Gwen for a few quick comments. And probably pause, we're going to bring forward a first-grade teacher, a fifth-grade teacher, and a few folks from the high school. We'll pause at each junction of that conversation to focus the conversation in that particular area.
All right, thank you. So as you've all heard before, when we get data, it presents more questions. So as we are studying the data, especially last spring, a lot more questions surfaced. And so typically, we then take some steps to gather more information. So what we worked on this spring was first of all, going into buildings and talking with principals, peer coaches, and differentiation specialists who support those buildings, really to focus on our math implementation, because our Bridges Math was year one, and to just see how things were going from their perspective. So we had had conversations with teachers and also had some classroom observations and really just define some strengths that we were seeing and then some opportunities that we could focus on through this year. We also talked a little bit about FastBridge data that you saw, talked a little bit about preliminary MCAs, and really had that, what are we noticing and what connections are we really making to the buildings? After that, we really wanted to hear from teachers. So we talked to K-5 teachers and a group of them came in over the summer. A lot of them were our original math committee that worked with us for the past two years. And then we had some additional teachers who were interested in joining. So during that time, we again looked at data and took a look at, we had K-1 come in separate, as Dr. Sembush had said, that early math to separate that out. And then we met with 2-5. And in both of those sessions, really started to look at the FastBridge data and what are we noticing? And what do we notice not only about the data, but about that connection to our classroom and with our curriculum and our resource? And we also took a look at some of the preliminary MCA and again, had some really great conversation and some time as a group just to come together and talk about what we were seeing and some steps that we could take. Kindergarten and first grade really got into, and Megan will talk a little bit more about that. And we had an additional time when we got together and really looked into each subtest and wanted to identify just what the purpose of those subtests were and just to become more familiar with FastBridge. Recommendations came from both of those groups to kind of drive us forward this year. One of them being that we felt that teachers needed additional training on FastBridge, on administering it, so that we were really tight on our fidelity with our administration. Another recommendation was that within our curriculum, we have some resources that we wanted to make sure we were paying more attention and highlighting. One of them was called a Minnesota Alignment Guide, which pays extra focus on the standards and making sure that we're looking and making sure we're aligned to the Minnesota standards in math. Another one was there's optional assessments within the program, one of them being a screener that really helps to guide our instruction. So it helps us to have those formative checks on how students are doing so that we can really plan and drive our instruction. We also talked about just being more intentional about some of those student book pages. We learned through the curriculum that through those student resource books, that is the opportunity for them to have that review and that practice with skills. So we wanted to just be really intentional about using those pages. And the last recommendation was that we also wanted to strengthen our communication with families. There are a lot of resources out there. We wanted to make sure that we're supporting families with knowing how that they can help at home and just being more clear on our communication. So those, I think, four or five recommendations were then presented to all K-5 staff that back to school. So we had district grade-level meetings where we presented the data again and kind of talked to everyone through the work that we had done in the summer. And then kind of helped them with what we were going to make for changes moving forward. And then our first early release, we also focused on that same thing and really looking at those optional assessments within Bridges and how we could drive our instruction with using those.
And maybe I'll just piggyback from there and talk about upcoming. We had our PD day in October. That was a focus. I mentioned this at the last board meeting in my closing comments in my administrative update, that we finally got a chance to launch the Ola training and REDACT-related training for our Phase 1 teachers. So that was in October. And now throughout, that was our October PD day. Throughout the remaining early release and PD time, we'll be balancing between continuing our implementation with Bridges and supporting and engaging in those conversations at the elementary level as well as teachers participating in the Ola training. So that's what will be coming forward. But again, I wanted a chance for Gwen to share some highlights specific from an overview related to what our curriculum focus and our target is. We bring teachers together, like she mentioned, in August. They're really driving, what do their colleagues need as Gwen looked into, when we have those professional development opportunities, whether it be workshop week, early release, or our PD days spread throughout the year. So I think we'll go next, we'll transition next to our first-grade teacher, Megan Waller from Jeffers Pond.
Who's going to come to? Give her my chair and I'll bring another one up.
Okay, sounds great.
Right here.
And she's going to speak from a teacher firsthand experience of what that looks like.
Sorry, I had to come in late, so I kind of missed a little bit of the beginning. So I have a little intro myself, I kind of set up, which might be a little repetitive or it might be very not repetitive. So I just wanted to ground the conversation because mentioning standardized test scores is a really tricky thing to analyze. Just about any training program for education will preach, "Don't teach to the test." Doing so kind of stagnates that real learning and it hinders student development of those applicable skills. But standardized test scores are often our go-to data point because that's how our system works with decision-making because it's a concrete piece of quantitative data that we have across buildings, across districts. So it is important. Those who aren't intimately familiar with that education often focus more on these test scores than those who coach and observe those learners every day. Most teachers will tell you that a test score is a single data point from a single day, not representative of everything a child knows and can do. Testing is in itself a skill completely separate from what we're actually trying to assess in the test. High scores don't necessarily mean better teaching and learning, but it also goes the other way, that low scores don't necessarily mean the inverse. But with that said, when the scores are lower than anticipated, as I'm guessing Jenny shared with the K-1 FastBridge test, we notice and we care deeply. I mean, my scores came in and I sunk because what I saw in my classroom for my kids last year was amazing. The things they talked about, the things they could do was like never before. I mean, I was teaching them things that never happened in first grade before. So when the test scores came in, I just went, "What is missing?" So our goal is not to achieve high standardized test scores. However, our goal is to achieve a high level of learning that can be reflected in those scores, if that makes sense, hopefully. So when I saw that my students' scores were so low, I was super grateful, truly, to get to be part of the meetings to discuss and figure out what can we do differently because that does not sit right with me, what we had last spring. And just to understand what was happening. So last year, what my kids could do, they could talk about math. They could explain problems, they could figure them all out. They could explain why their problems worked and they could talk to other kids to explain why they weren't working. And I could see that effectiveness from the curriculum we're using every day and what we're doing. So getting a chance to examine the data, we were able to really find specifically in first grade that place value was a huge concern, the kids weren't understanding. Looking at the curriculum, we taught place value all year long. So that's why it was really interesting to see like, oh, they weren't getting that. So I actually, I talked to my husband, an educator, about it and he was like, "You're speaking gibberish." So he's like, "Why don't you try a different analogy to try and explain what this means?" So he kind of thought, "Oh, this is like how we all learn how to drive. And you go to the driving test and all the sign, you get to the driving test and all the signs have different pictures. They mean the same thing, but they're not the pictures you've learned all along." That's kind of what happened with our first graders. Like it kind of just threw them because for FastBridge, it's a one-minute quick test of these different things for them. So while they knew place value really well and could show it to me in their own, they weren't used to using the minute, minute bow tips that were on the test. So that was one thing that we really looked at. So where I was using popsicle sticks before to show tens and ones to them, I now am using the base ten blocks, which are of the test and what they see on the test. But I'm also using straws, I'm also using unifix cubes. So I'm not just teaching to the test, but I'm helping them try to generalize the concept to different skills in different ways so that when they get to the test, it makes sense. But that's not the only reason they know it and not the only way they know it. Because when they get to be older and grown-ups, I can't say everyone's going to use this version to talk about it. They need to be able to carry it through the picture of it. We're also using our notebooks in our classroom every week so that now they're writing it. So it's not just a conversation in the verbal, even though I can hear them. But it gives me a chance to hold them accountable and really see what they're doing and their thinking. And they're drawing the place value in the notebooks. And I'm looking at it and they're talking about the numbers at the same time. Aside from that, we're also just trying to observe that growth, which relies on checking in with the kids and seeing those understanding. So I've been using the Home Connections, which is part of the curriculum, in a different way this year. They're kind of short activity sheets to use as exit tickets. And I'm having the kids do those every once in a while so that then I can check them. I can see their scores, I can send them home, so I can communicate with families. I can see which kids need more support from me so that I can try to fit that into my day to find ways to really help them with what they're working on. So those are just a few different tweaks that I'm using this year to try to help to see how that's going to go. I know it's not a one-size-fits-all, that doesn't exist in education. Every kid is different and what they need is going to be a different feeling. I'm hoping that this is going to make a huge difference as we continue with our FastBridge scores. I'm not assuming they're all going to ace it as much as that is what I want for them. I'm hopeful that it will show better support for their understanding of the math concepts, that they'll learn it better and then that is what will show up in the FastBridge score so that you'll still see it carry through as it goes on, as we keep going. But I'm looking forward to continuing to talk with my colleagues and figure out what's working, what's not working and what we can kind of go through.
Thank you, Megan. If you'd stay here for just a moment, I think we're going to take a pause. We've thrown a lot at you, want to take a pause and engage in questions that you have for those who have presented thus far and from the perspective that they are sharing with you here this evening.
So first of all, Gwen, where'd you go? Thank you for your expanded role this year. That's a lot, to be the expert K through 12, like that's a big deal. So have every faith, but that's a big, that's a big deal. So thank you. And thank you, Mrs. Waller, is that correct? For coming and speaking to us today. In reviewing some of these at home, I had kind of a similar, it's kind of funny you use a car analogy because I had the same thought, where it's kind of like, we're having our kids take driver's ed to teach, to drive a car and then we're going to have them learn how to do it with Henry Ford's Model T. I mean, it's antiquated. And I realize that, and I know you're talking FastBridge, and when I'm looking at MCAs too in particular, I'm looking at something that's incredibly antiquated, a system that's antiquated. And that's not even something at this level, this is at the state and federal level. I'm looking at standards going, okay, the math standards, you know, haven't been, and I know they're getting updated and thank goodness, but the one currently on the books right now is from 2007. That's insane to me. So when you say, "We're not, we're not able to teach to the test," well, there's a reason because it's almost 20 years old. The, I'm talking MCAs, teaching to standards, not necessarily the snapshot in time, which I know FastBridge is. So I, and I realize it's a bigger conversation, but it angers me when we have these data points. I'm like, it's, data is good, but when we have this and we're supposed to give our kids the Model T when we're teaching to the Board Explorer that's tricked out with all this great technology and they don't know, there's that disconnect, so that's frustrating to me. My question, when it comes to, because you're here speaking from an elementary level and Gwen looking at this from kind of a K through 12, when you say, you know, "We got everybody together and we're looking at this data" and you said, "What did it," and "We saw a lot of things." So you touched on it a little bit, but I'm curious with what, more of what you saw, if you could give some examples maybe that are a little bit more real-world. And then when we look at the subtest that you were talking about, you reviewed those, you know, teachers need more training, the curriculum assistance that, you know, we might have on our fingertips that maybe we haven't quite utilized yet. So if we're talking about, like, that was about FastBridge and we're talking about training for REDACT that we're building into our professional development days, thank goodness, which is, which is a good thing. Can you do both? Do you have time to do both?
The tricky balance for sure. Right, so the REDACT will take the majority of our time this year and needs to take that time. So we are trying to balance when we can with some math. So our first early release, we definitely wanted for Bridges. We also started the school year intentionally with some more math training and the FastBridge training before we started the REDACT training. We are going to try through staff meetings, through learning teams, to continue to do that work in math that we know that needs to be done, knowing that early release time and our next district days will be spent on the REDACT. So it is a balance that we're trying.
Yeah, and I'll, excuse me, and I'll just add too that the, the conversations around the load that's coming legislatively through various expectations on districts is significant. You all know that, you've been a part of the lobbyist groups as well, to really ask for no new mandates that are under or unfunded. And that becomes a challenge because there's a lot of work that needs to occur to truly transform education. I think you bring up a good point around the vintage of our vehicle and where we may be kinda sputtering along when, you know, the futuristic cars are like surpassing many in the real world outside of K-12. So that is a big conversation that many superintendents are gonna, going to be engaging in, where there is a cohort of us that will be coming together to dig into the very issue that you spoke of, Director Olsted, around the disconnect between standardized state assessments and the standards and how that misalignment is causing gaps for many learners, particularly in our AMSD districts where we have a lot of leverage and advocacy power. That will be something that we are actually bringing in various consultants to bring forth a conversation through our next legislative cycle coming up here in the spring, or in the early spring or just after the first of the year when the, when they convene. Because if we don't address that gap, these conversations, these frustrations that you and many all of us feel will go unheard. So that is also something that's happening simultaneously to what's happening in the day-to-day with our staff.
And I guess one more point and then I'm done, I promise. The, I sat in a Southwest Metro District board meeting last week and again, that's a different kind of district. But the Director of Teaching and Learning made her annual report with a lot of different tests. And throughout the course of her presentation, she's talking, she's like, here's, on this slide, a couple of things to keep in mind and a couple of caveats and what you need to remember about this is this. And I'm thinking to myself, if you have so many caveats to make your point, something's broken. And even another board director who I can't, I wish I could remember where she was from, but she, she said she's worked in assessments and she's like, this is broken. And we're asking our kids to take this test and we're asking, you know, and I, trust me, I'm not making excuses here. I promise you, testing is important. But I felt like throughout the whole thing, two or three times, every single slide that she had was a caveat. And I, I felt bad because I was just like, if you have to say that and something's wrong, then it's not broad enough results or it's not, it's just broken. And so we had the same conversation with another district last week and I just, I thought it was interesting. So I'm really happy to hear that superintendents are doing this and sign me up. Like I wanna, I wanna go advocate for something like that because it's, it's broken and we're looking at tests that are almost 20 years old and I don't think that's fair.
Thank you. I don't have any specific questions. I appreciate very much the context that you bring to the conversation and your reality in the classroom and the fact that you feel and have seen your kids demonstrate this, but yet you have a snapshot one moment in time where they didn't or they didn't to the level that, you know, we expect them to. So, and that's exactly what FastBridge is and that's what you're using it for. And that, like, period, done, end of sentence, you know, so thank you.
My only thing is, and I appreciate what you said, Director Olsted, my only maybe different perspective is, is that we're talking about kindergarten and first grade math. So like, how different could the curriculum be in the last 10 years? I mean, we're talking like one plus one equals two. And maybe I'm wrong, I'm not a kindergarten or math teacher.
It's still that. What is more? Yeah. I mean, my students last year, we're talking fractions, like they can do halves and quarters. Some of them are talking about three eights, five sixteenths now. Place value, some of the kids are getting into thousands, 10,000s, 100,000s. This is not all of them, this is not the expectation in first grade. But there are kids who are ready, so we're trying to step up to where they are. These are kids who are figuring out time to all the degrees, the minutes. I had students last year who were starting to do multiplication, not because I taught them how, but because they were starting to see how the numbers work together because we did so much to work on that. Which again, there have been kids 20 years ago who were doing multiplication in first grade, but it wasn't the norm and it was less school-directed. I mean, I wasn't 20 years ago doing multiplication with my first graders where I had students now who were like coming up with different things to figure out our days of school. They were saying, three times three times 10 is gonna get me to 90 days of school. And I was like, yeah, let's go on that. And I could work with them more with that, which is why I said I could see them thinking and explaining and they could tell me why that worked. Again, I wanna be careful because that is not my expectation of first graders. That is not what I expect, that is not what I want any parent to hold their first grader to because that is not what they need to be able to do. But I did have students who could and so we could talk about it. And the rest, the kids could learn from that benefit as well.
Wouldn't they then be exceeding the standards if the standards are older than what you're teaching them currently? I mean, I, that's where I'm challenged.
They were able to take the concept we were working on and take it to the next level, yes. But they weren't able to do it to maybe the standard of the next grade levels extent. So they could go farther, but not as far as they would need to for the next grade. Does that make sense? Just a reminder, the MCA's don't start till third grade, so we don't have any.
Oh, we're talking the FastBridge, okay, okay.
Which is those, it's not standards, it's that, it's that foundational skill. So, and even MCA's up into the upper grades for reading, they're not teaching, or they're not assessing those foundational reading skills that everyone's being trained on right now in the REDACT. That is all embedded in the, in the FastBridge data. So those foundational skills, again, are FastBridge and that's not measuring standards.
But doesn't the FastBridge align closer to our testing than, because I, I thought we, FastBridge had closer alignment to what we were teaching.
It is, it is somewhat predictive of MCA's because you need the foundational skills in order to access.
Because it's more foundational, right?
Content. It's not a one-to-one, there's tons of studies out there that show the, the connection. We're finding across the state actually that, as you saw in the, in FastBridge, there's those four categories and then there's that line there in the pink above seems like we're good to go and the purple below, we're actually finding that students need to be in that very top category in order for it to be really predictive of MCA's. So the state in general is talking about, like, do we need to think about this a little bit differently? Because it's not, it, it is predictive, but it's not a one-to-one, it's, there's an association.
Does that have to do with like the cut scores where like an MCA proficient's cut score really is only 50% proficient or somewhere around, it's like really strange how they do their, their scoring with their cut scores.
It's not really cut scores, but it's, it's, it's similar to that.
Similar to that, okay. The next question I have is just, how long does it take to do a FastBridge assessment? I've heard different stor, I mean, I've heard that it's very time-consuming and I'm wondering if, like, is that taking away from, like, actually teaching the kids?
We've been working, the principals and the team have been super supportive of trying to figure that out. It depends on the time of year because the tests aren't the same always from each season because we do it three times a year. It depends on if we're talking reading or math. It's a one-minute test, but there's different substrands of it. Plus, we were fortunate to do it fall during those assessment days, part of it. Because the other part is as a first grader, if I were to do all of those tests at one sitting, it's too much. Like, they are exhausted mentally that the scare, scores aren't fair, I think, to give from them. So we broke it apart into two parts. And with a first grader, transitions are not what I wish they were, especially, I mean, they can't boom, boom, boom. I can't be like, okay, test you now, I'm gonna test you. Like, there's that transition to it. So I'd like to give you a hard number.
That's okay, I mean, I think, I think the feedback I've received is if I could just teach my kids, right? Like, I know my kids, I know where they're at, but also then I hear what you said earlier about, this is where I thought my kids were at. So I, I get, I understand there's testing and data, but I'm just, you know, in my mind, trying to understand how much time is actually being taught, taken away from doing the data analysis versus just straight-up teaching the basics of one plus one equals two.
And Director Atkinson, I, I think that, that's the crux, I think going back to Director Olsted's point. We've gotta find a better balance. We're not trying to avoid the accountability of testing and the knowledge that we can gain from testing. But to what you just shared, how much is too much when it's not a relevant connection to the actual instruction? Where I'm now foregoing quality core instructional time versus assessment time that can sometimes be shaky at best. So that's the argument that I was referencing, that many are saying, this is enough. We need to do something fundamentally different and bring this forward to our, to our elected, our MDE, et cetera. So that's, that's what that group is really gonna be hammering home on.
Well, now FastBridge reading is legislatively mandated per REDACT, so we don't have a choice on that. So I guess in my mind, it's either we do it and check the box or we do it and we use, use it for, to drive our instruction. So I think we've all made a conscious decision because it's been embedded in our system and because we know the features of the REDACT moving forward that we are required to keep doing it and there's a lot that we can do with it to drive our instruction and to drive system-level decision-making. So I, I think we're all kind of on that same pathway with it.
One question, and this is for, Mrs. Molden. When you mentioned strength in communication with families, you've identified that, do you give any sort of best practice guidance, is this is what our expectations are? So that we know that, we, we know that this is happening and?
So what, at that back-to-school, we met with each grade-level team and put like four or five different resources that should be encouraged. So is that really the building level for that follow-through to happen then? And gave them just a variety of resources that they should be using to communicate with families.
So there is best practice guidance given?
Okay, thank you. And that's built into the Bridges curriculum piece as well?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
All right, and we're gonna pull Jessica Riley from Lola Delago, fifth grade teacher. And she certainly has been part of these conversations.
The math committee.
The math committee. So definitely don't wanna hold you from speaking of that, but also a representative of Lola Delago. As we presented the Apple data earlier in our data presentation tonight, we wanted to make sure to bring somebody that can speak to that as well.
See, I've been in fifth grade at Lola Delago since we've had a fifth grade at Lola Delago. I was part of creating the fifth grade there and so our first fifth graders are now ninth, oh, ninth plies. But yeah, kinda going back to like the FastBridge and the math and the MCA data and everything, I also was on the math committee and got two pilot Bridges. So I'm in year three of Bridges instead of year two. And so being able to have a year ahead of like the district as a whole, I've been able to see the ways to be able to better communicate to families, such as I am having kids, after we finish a module, which is a fourth of a unit, they'll take out any of those workbook pages, whether we've completed them or not, and they get to take them home. And they're, it's communicated to families that it, any uncompleted pages is optional extra practice at home. And any completed pages is another communication tool where families can see how we've been solving these problems. Because we are solving math in ways that is very different than you or I were ever taught math. I mean, things like in fifth grade, the, kind of the crux of fifth grade math is fractions. And unlike denominators of any denominator you can think of, it's, it's everything. And so, but 10 and 11-year-olds, fractions is still a very abstract concept for concrete thinkers. And one thing that is really great about Bridges is they bring in all these concrete models to help students understand fractions in a meaningful way. For example, they use the money model. So when you think of one half, you know that that's 50 cents because that's half of a dollar. When you think of one twentieth, you know that's a nickel because there's 20 nickels in a dollar. We also use the clock model as well for denominators such as thirds and sixths that wouldn't work well with money, but it does work for 60 minutes in an hour. And then for the denominators where it doesn't work really well with 100 cents or 60 minutes in an hour, they're learning a double number line. And so again, kind of like my first grade counterpart is saying, the math discussions we are having in class is so deep and so much more profound than I can ever remember thinking about math as my own. And I have, I'm kind of a weird elementary teacher in that I really, really love math, it's kind of my passion. Seeing them have those discussions and we've kind of seen in this first year of Bridges that they have these really deep, rich, real-life discussions, but putting it paper to pencil on an older standardized assessment, be it FastBridge or MCA, there is kind of a bridge that we need to do. So part of that is sending those workbook pages home. I'm also providing more time in class where they are able to talk about their thinking and then formulate how to put that on paper. I'm making sure that I am using the formative assessments, which Bridges calls checkpoints or work samples. And not only am I giving them in class, I am giving them back to students. And I tell them, okay, this isn't the unit test that counts towards your quote-unquote math grade on your report card. It is a checkpoint and it is exactly that. It's seeing how you are doing at this point in the unit. And it's your chance to either celebrate what you know or learn from your mistakes and be able to grow from there. Because I, I am a firm believer that mistakes is a part of the learning process. And so being able to see what their thinking is on pencil and paper and then go back and kind of reevaluate what might be some misconceptions where they're able to talk it through, but maybe they might forget exactly the right denominator to use or something like that. Again, going back to the fractions, you tell I'm in the fractions. But, and so then also within fifth grade at Lola Delago, we have created a fifth grade website where parents can go to and that's emailed out every Friday with our newsletter and it's got links for resources. And so on that, for the math section, I've got a link to the Bridges Math at Home website that has all sorts of activities that parents can do with their fifth grader that kind of aligns to how we're learning math in fifth grade. I also have all the work places, which are the kind of math games we do in the classroom. I have the digital versions so that families can pay, play with their fifth graders at home. And then parents can also request a digital home learning packet that can come in English or Spanish and includes an answer key, which again, helps our parents who maybe don't quite understand this new version of math, but is also, I'm having students being able to recall and find patterns and be excited about math. I remember my very first year piling Bridges and kids being upset that the math hour was over, which is not something I was used to as a math teacher. And just being like, no, we can't stop now. And, and that's what I love about Bridges, is getting kids excited about talking about math. But again, we also are using, seeing kind of the math data, the FastBridge and the MCA data, making sure that we are teaching to the standards, not necessarily teaching to the test, but making sure that what they're being assessed on, they have been exposed to. And so we are using the Bridges Minnesota Alignment Guide. And that's not necessarily cramming more into the year, it's knowing what we can take out of the Bridges curriculum that is maybe the common core standards that don't fall under Minnesota standards and replace with more specific to Minnesota standards. An example of that in fifth grade is common core standards say that you are supposed to multiply and divide fractions. Here in Minnesota, that is more of a sixth, seventh grade standard. So our fifth graders don't need to be learning that as heavily yet. They can be exposed to it, but they don't need to be mastering that. But what's not in a common core standard, but is in a Minnesota standard for fifth grade, is being able to find the area of triangles and parallelograms. And so I could, and being able to find mean, median and mode, which that doesn't really show up in common core. show up in common core standards. And so it's not like Common Core has more or less than Minnesota. It's that it's different and it shows up in different years. And so being able to use the Minnesota Alignment Guide, it, Bridges does a great job of saying, do this instead of this section of a unit or this section of number corner. And then specific to Lola Delago that is kind of unique from the rest of the district is our students are learning math in Spanish, but being standardized tests in English. And so when Bridges came along and I got to pilot it a couple of years ago, I knew that we have the 60-minute Bridges Math Block, and then we also have the 20-minute Number Corner. And so I went to Goan and I said, I would really like to do, keep the 60 minutes in Spanish because we want to be developing the Spanish of our, of our learners at Lola Delago, but I wanted to do the Number Corner in English so that there's the bridge between academic language. And this is now my third year of doing it that way and being able to see the light bulbs of kids who may have misunderstood a word in one language and then suddenly hearing it in this other language and bridging the two. Again, their math conversation is much deeper and richer because they are actually able to understand the math vocabulary in both languages. And so I, when we adopted Bridges, we decided to continue that also in fourth grade. So they're getting Number Corner in English as well. Because we know that we're getting closer to middle school where they will be having math in English. And so we want them being able to do both. That's math related. And then Apple. Apple, again, so this is, we've had five years of Apple data. This will be the sixth year that fifth graders take Apple. That's the Language Proficiency Test. And we've consistently seen that we're above the national average and that we particularly excel in the area of speaking and reading. And then listening and speaking is kind of that middle ground. And writing tends to have been our lowest strand. It's not low, but it's the lowest of the four. And so one of the things that the fifth grade teachers at Lola Delago have done is, well, first, we owned that when COVID hit and there was distance learning and everything, there was less opportunities for kids to speak Spanish to us on an individual or even interacting with each other. Because when you're in your own isolated places at home, you can't interact quite as much. And there was less opportunity to write in Spanish. And so since we've been back in person and everything, we have had more kind of class activities that requires kids to be speaking more, but also kind of daily writing activities. And we've even been incorporating school version of Duolingo. It's not like the Duolingo that you can just get on your phone for fun. It is an academic Duolingo, which kind of helps to fine tune the grammar and the semantics of a language. Because what we know historically about immersion students is their vocabulary is through the roof. They, they have lots of words that they can say to you in compared to like a traditional Spanish classroom student. But the grammar, kind of the polish on it, because they were never explicitly taught the grammar. I mean, I don't know if you ever took a Spanish class in high school. You probably learned that you conjugate verbs with yo tu, la ya, nosotros, the six different conjugations. Immersion students aren't explicitly taught that. And so we are starting to explicitly teach that in the upper grades. Once they've developed that really strong conversational skills, now we're working on polishing it. And then with our secondary immersion track, that is only further polished because they're able to dig more into the grammar and everything in a more, for lack of better terms, traditional Spanish kind of type model, but also honoring the wealth of language that they all already have, if that makes sense. That was a lot.
So hopefully you've seen why we invited Jessica to this conversation today. Obviously the perspective that she can bring, multiple perspectives, I think informs our conversation, which this is intended to be, with you all as a board. So open it up before we transition to the high school. We'll stay in this space for just a moment. And any questions that you have for Jessica?
I just, I don't have a question. I just appreciate the enthusiasm and your ability to communicate, you know, your experience and the students' experience. It's, it was a joy to listen to, actually.
Thank you.
I had a question from just generally, because when we started off this conversation, there was a comment made about the fidelity of giving the FastBridge tests. Could you elaborate on that a little bit more?
So two, five FastBridge looks very different than K1 FastBridge. K1 FastBridge is, to my understanding, I don't do K1 FastBridge, is one-on-one student to teacher. Whereas two, five A Math, A Reading is one, a student with the iPad. And so that is going to be very standardized because we don't really, other than say, get out your iPad, open up FastBridge to this test, it's much like an MCA. We don't see the questions. We don't, you know, get to prompt them or anything. So there, I mean, my understanding is there would have to be fidelity because it's not an interview process. I'm not able to give hints or anything like that.
We've had glitches, though.
Okay. Because that's what, when you said training on giving it, was that just for K through one?
It was focused on K1.
Okay, okay.
But I will say, we did change how we give the math FastBridge in that we used to give fast track math, where it would start out with a very short timed math automaticity test and then go into a not timed, more looking like MCA's type test. And we've chosen to break that apart because kids didn't understand which part was timed and which part wasn't. And so we saw that our math automaticity scores were looking really, really low and concerning. Because kids, maybe they got through three questions and they got them all right. But if you don't get through 20 some questions in that timed test, your score is going to be really low because you're showing you're not automatic. And if they don't know that it's a timed test, they don't know to get through it as fast as possible. So now when we give them the math automaticity portion, there's no paper or pencil. And we tell them, if you don't know a question, guess and move on. Just do your best for that portion. And then we give the A Math, they get paper and pencil, and it's not timed. And so it's, it's two different days that we give it. And it's very different expectations of what to do on the test because of the needs of the test.
And on the K1, I think there are just more injuries when you're one-on-one. Like, one of them was if the student points to, to count the objects, that's incorrect. The little details in scoring was what we wanted to make sure that teachers were understanding prior to that test.
A lot more moving pieces in K1, for sure.
But yeah, there, we, we did uncover quite a few at two and above as well.
Great. And by the way, I love seeing how well we're doing with Lola Delago and those kids, because that's, that's phenomenal opportunity. So thank you.
All right. We are going to shift gears here at this time. And one of the things that I want to put out there is to, we've spent a lot of time talking about FastBridge and MCA's a little bit, and also Apple. But in our, our quest for academic excellence, we thought it would be important for this conversation to include some conversation around efforts that we've made at the high schools specifically, essentially the capstone experience within our system. For students to have exposure to, should they desire, exposure to taking an AP level course while they're with us at Prior Lake High School. Because that course, any course in the AP suite of courses is intended to be an exposure to potentially what's next, what's to come for students once they leave us, Prior Lake High School and move on beyond. And so we thought it would be really important, and we obviously had in our data set, some really exciting results that we've seen over the course of the last five years. And, and this effort goes back beyond those five years, but we just presented five years worth of data in this data set. That has been a conscious effort at Prior Lake High School to provide those opportunities of exposure to that level of rigor as students, prior to students leaving Prior Lake High School. So I have two folks here tonight. As you might guess, it would have been great if we had a first, a kindergarten teacher, a first grade teacher, somebody from every grade level. And then we, you know, the secondary, somebody from every content area. But we'd be here till midnight if we did that. So we kind of looked at various elements of the presentation and wanted to bring different perspectives from the ground of that. So I'm going to first start off with Mr. Thorpe, our assistant principal at the high school, who oversees the AP program and all of the components of that and all subject areas where we offer AP, to share some of his thoughts. And then Paula Wolf, one of our teachers in the social studies area of AP, will speak of her experience. So.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to share a few numbers. We saw some slides, some numbers up there. But I think it's important to talk, to be able to tell the full story of what those numbers are sharing, and to highlight some really cool things going on. We offer 22 AP courses at the high school now in the areas of arts, science, computer science, language, math, and social studies. Last year, we had our highest participation rate with students, about eight hundred, well, exactly 884 kids took 1,532 exams. And, and you can see the trend has been going up over the last five years. College Board, who runs the Advanced Placement Program, usually is pretty good at the five-year data, but our numbers have been consistently going up. This year, and I just checked at about five o'clock, we, we might be our first year to tip over 1,000 kids. We're at 991. So again, we've gone up 100-plus students, somewhere probably in the 1,700 exam range. So it's, it's again, a big jump for us. One of the benefits of AP courses for our students is they, they may qualify for college credit. Each, each of the students that run exam in May, to score that, it's a score out of five. Historically, scores three out of, three, four, or five would equate to college credit for those students. So there's a big incentive for the kids. Last year, 80% of our students got qualifying scores. And, and that's a testament of 1,500 exams. That's an impressive number. In conversation with one of our teachers who teaches AP, you know, to put those numbers into context, and he had shared, the U of M costs about $550 of credit, right? You, you, you applied that credit towards the U of M. I mean, the cost savings is, I mean, ballpark, two to three million dollars that, that our kids would be saving and our families are saving. So I mean, the, the benefit to our community is, is great with this. And, and the kids are saying that. But I think one of the conversations that we've had as a school is getting that, that college credit is a big deal. But I think that the, the other thing that we don't talk enough about is college readiness. And, and, and there's nothing more affirming for our teachers when our kids come back and say, your course prepared me for college. I'm ready. I'm successful in college because of your course. And, and that's something that we as a group are really trying to push. Because we do hang our hat on really good scores, but that is, that's one part of this equation. The other one, in, in talking to college admissions offices, college recruiters, things like that, and we ask them, what do you want to see? And without a doubt, without a doubt, they always say, AP courses are very strong. We understand the curriculum. We understand the rigor. We understand the scores kids are getting. And, and so we're trying to communicate that to our kids, that these are opportunities within our building, that if you're college bound and you want to be college ready and you want to get into college, like, like a lot of the arrows are pointing to, take the opportunity in an AP course. I, I can't say enough about, like, these numbers growing, yes, we have grown in enrollment, but not a huge amount in the last couple of years. I think we, we have to look at the work that our teachers have done to really take away barriers, to, to remove any obstacle in the way to get kids to participate. And, and Ms. Wolf is a good example, but like, we, these teachers are going out of their way, not to tell kids why they couldn't or shouldn't participate in these courses, but saying, you should try it. Try this. You can do it. It's going to be hard, right? There's no question. They are rigorous courses. They are hard. But i- if you went back years and years ago, it was often prerequisites, like you need to have a C in your last class. You need to demonstrate whatever, you need to take a prerequisite course. Now the message is, if you want to do this, if you want to join in, come along with us. And we're showing that their kids are being successful. So now the kids are supporting each other, saying, I didn't want to do it. I was pushed to do it and I did it. Now I'm more ready for college. I got a college credit, or maybe not. But I'm, I, I took this rigorous opportunity. It was hard, but I'm, I'm a better student because of it. One, one last thing I wanted to point out, and, and it's just a cool thing, but, but last year, we get a score report and it shows us all of our numbers where our kids fell. Again, 80% of our kids, you know, had a, a qualifying score of, of three or above. But what I thought was really cool is out of our 22 courses, all of them were above state national average for scores. All of them across the board. And, and what, what that tells us, what that tells students is, it's not necessarily the teacher, it's not the course. I mean, the product that you could get in any AP course at our high school right now is really, really strong. And we live in this world, and I, I, it's hard because I'm not talking about other schools, but what you tend to see is, if you look at another school, they'll have really strong scores in one subject area, and then they kind of drop down. And it goes up and down. And, and we know sometimes it's teacher dependent. The teacher's wonderful and they get really high scores. Our kids are lucky because all of our courses were above state national average. So they're like, whatever you choose to sign up for, you'll, you'll have a good opportunity. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Wolf because she can speak specifically to the courses, or her course.
My course, yeah. Okay. So I am Mrs. Wolf. Some of you may formally know me as Mrs. Gaffney. This is my 30th year of teaching. I taught three years in St. Charles as a social studies teacher in a cohort with Terri Stallow as an English teacher. And then I came here and have taught for 27 years. Dan was actually my mentor. So I also live in Prior Lake. I've lived here for 27 years. Two of my sons went through Prior Lake Schools. They are 27 and 24 respectfully. I've been a citizen of Prior Lake for 27 years. And I'm deeply invested in Prior Lake. I will retire from Prior Lake. That will be my experience. So I'm here because Dan and Chad asked me to speak about the AP course, AP Psychology. It's a relatively new course. It actually started at MinCaps, the first year of MinCaps. In 2016, I was asked to teach there part-time. It's halftime at MinCaps, halftime at the high school. And at the time, we placed AP courses into MinCaps. After the first year, we kind of looked at that program and said, probably concurrent enrollment is a better fit than, than AP there because of the rigor of AP and the, and the students that we were getting. And basically that year, as I came back to the high school, I had high school students begging me to bring AP Psych to the high school. And luckily, with the support of administration in my department, I was able to do that in 2017. 2017, in MinCaps, we had 16 students. 2017, we had 25 students. As of 2023, 2024, last year, we had 130 students. I went from teaching one section to solely teaching AP Psychology. It is the largest elective AP class at Prior Lake High School, noting that it is an AP rigorous course that isn't elective. They're electing to take this. It doesn't fulfill any credits. They're electing to do this. They're electing to challenge themselves, which is truly a tribute to our students. They're phenomenal, that they're willing to, to challenge themselves. And I think also an attribute to our elementary and middle school teachers that have done a phenomenal job preparing them for the high school as well. In fact, this year, we now have expanded our AP Psych staff to include Barbie Cass, who actually taught AP Psychology in Thailand, which brings a totally different component to the curriculum, which is wonderful. The exam scores in AP Psych have not only exceeded the Minnesota State standards and the US standards, we also have exceeded the global standards by almost a full point. This is truly extraordinarily, extraordinary. And we now, as of last year, have exceeded our pre-COVID numbers as far as our passing rate. And so we have recovered. Thank you Elementary and Middle School for filling those learning gaps. But we're now above what we were prior to COVID. So we're not content with getting back to where we were. We're, we're content with exceeding at this point. So what makes this more impressive at Prior Lake, to truly understand how awesome it is, is as I talk with other teachers who teach AP around Minnesota and globally, typically it's seen as kind of an elitist program for kids going to elitist colleges. And there's prerequisites as far as grades, letters of recommendation, standardized scores. We have eliminated all those barriers. So in AP Psych in particular, it's 10 through 12, so sophomores through seniors can take it. 45% of the kids this year have never taken an AP course before. And some of those are seniors where this is going to be seniors, where this is going to be their AP course that they take before they go to college to kind of determine what they're doing. 21% of my kids right now are taking four or more AP courses. So again, they're electing to take this, in addition to knowing it's not achieving a college, or a high school standardized credit. We have many minority students, we have exceeded our free and reduced lunch students that are now participating. And this year, it started about two years ago, I'm starting to see kids on 504s or IEP challenge themselves in AP Psych. So, when I, when we talk about diversity, it's multi-level diversity, and it's important to note that this is not, I want to speak to the other AP courses, obviously I'm speaking to my experience, but this is across the board in AP classes. And I think it's truly a tribute to the teachers, having to adjust so much to kind of how it has evolved in the last five years, and to be able to maintain that level of standards, even when other schools around Minnesota are kind of, because as teachers, I think you're so affected by scores and how you're evaluated as a teacher, it's very easy to shy away from taking risks with students. And I have not got that as an AP teacher from administration or from you guys, and I think our kids are willing to take that risk. And I think it's so important to do that in the high school, while they have support from home, as far as rigor goes, and they have, you know, they're going home. We all know what can happen a freshman year of college, if that's the first time they challenge themselves academically, that can be disastrous. So the fact that they're challenging themselves too. I also want to say this, we have kids taking AP classes that are not college-bound. They're going to our tech schools, and they're going into the workforce. And so, again, it's important to note that although they do get that college credit, we have kids challenging themselves that are not, have no, maybe eventually evolved to going to college, but are going into our workforce and are also going to our tech schools, which we encourage, okay? So, again, it's not just a single, one-dimensional type of student. So why do they take it? AP Psych in particular, 80% of the students have said they take it because they're interested, I think there's a natural interest in psychology, especially with everything going on in the world. But also, AP Psych is a college credit standardized for every major. And so, for every major, regardless of what you take, you have to take either a Psych or a Soc course, so it fulfills that credit. It's also important to note, this was one student that you might recognize, Dan Bergen, last year, who was the representative with you guys, who was awesome. Oftentimes, it's noted by our students that the class is challenging, it's fun and challenging, and also, this is super important for you guys to understand, is that it's a way I can stay here at Prior Lake and get college credit and participate in my sports and activities in a way where I'm still connected as a Prior Lake student, and I'm still connected to my friends. And so, again, it, the AP program is vital in getting students to stay here and not go to your Normandals and those kind of things. I was also, just so you know, you know, concurrent enrollment is a question we've asked college and the schools with psychology before, and I actually took the opportunity to review some of the St. Cloud University, Minnesota College, and the schools where kids don't have to take the test. But I'll tell you what I found is the rigor's not there. Whereas the AP Board really controls the curriculum, and it's standardized, and it's global, when you start talking about taking a class at Normandale, what our parents have to know is, that curriculum is largely not under any type of supervision, and is really kind of whatever the teacher wants to teach, whatever is their kind of nugget of what they want to teach. And the rigor is just not there. And so, what I found with students, because I talked to many students after they graduate, is AP courses prepare them for the rigor of college, whereas they're getting the college credit within Normandale, or, and that's an opportunity for kids, it's where kids are trying to work. But it does not prepare them properly for college, because the rigor is not there, okay? Also, from the student survey, just so you guys know, one of the things I ask the kids, which I think is important for us to note too, is at Prior Lake, what is the largest, biggest mental health concern that you have as students? And this has evolved, this has changed. And so, 32% of our kids, their biggest concern is their levels of anxiety. I think our kids are feeling it right now, okay? They're feeling the election, they're feeling polarization, and our kids are feeling it right now. So, I wanted to take this opportunity to challenge our board, to come together, okay? I know as teachers, we are trying, and administrators, I think we have to regain trust and faith in each other, to move not only our city but our country forward. And I think the kids are, the kids are feeling it, our high school kids are feeling it. And, you know, we need to do what we can, once this whole song and dance is over, to really come together. 20% of them are concerned about their social media addiction and social media influence. So, thank you from the bottom of our hearts for the cellphone policy. I cannot tell you, I have not had cellphones in my classroom for three years. And the kids would put them in a little cubby and they'd get extra credit, and I tell you, it helped with my teacher, Bruno, my level of respect that I felt. Teachers are loving it. We're seeing just a cooling off at the high school of discipline issues, we're seeing kids engage one-on-one, being able to communicate, not having that barrier. It's been, it's been phenomenal. So, again, I think in my 20 years, the single most impactful board decision that we've seen, okay? So I thank you for that. 19% sleep issues, they're concerned about their sleep, which is tied to anxiety, and 15% illicit drug use and self-medicating due to mental health issues. And so, again, I think we see, I just did a unit on, we're doing a unit on the brain right now, and the kids are concerned about them, because they have so many, and especially high flyers that are so anxious, that's when we worry about alcohol and marijuana use as, to bring them off their anxiety. And so, again, they're very open about their concerns about that. And again, AP Psych is a class that addresses that. Also, an interesting note, this is the first time since I've taught AP that depression wasn't in the top four. I don't know what that means, I'm not sure. I think the kids are more aware of it, I'm not quite sure, I don't know if it's a blip on the radar, but it's an interesting note. Now, a couple of things I just wanted to highlight with AP Psychology. This fall, we had our eighth annual Psych Fair at the high school. We started again at MinCaps with four experiments, the kids, the scientific method is what we're stressing, that is the new CED, and AP is stressing good science. And basically, the kids created projects, we had over 40 projects this year running. They had to replicate a study that has already been done, because we know that good science is science based on replication. And then, when they were done with that, we had teachers and coaches, we even had grandparents show up to participate, it was quite awesome. And then the students, when they're done, it sounds fun, but what the students then do is they crunch data, just like you guys did, and they present, you know, have to crush inferential statistics, they review their hypothesis, we stress ethical standards, and they present those, and basically do like a doctoral defense as 10th through 12th graders. Also important to note with AP, the AP Board reviews and creates new CED, new standards, not frequently, but they do do that, and in 2024, 2025, they did that in AP Psychology. So they changed it a little bit, certain standards that were present before are no longer present now, and they kind of updated it. We follow the CED in Prior Lake, I follow it to the letter. And again, I think that's why our test scores aren't so high. And so, again, it kind of aligns with the new scientific standards that we have today. So, what we do in Prior Lake to prove that we are following the CED is, I turn in an audit that says how we're meeting the standards. And in order for kids to get college credit in every AP class, that has to be done, okay? So Chad reminds us, we have to turn in an audit, we have to prove that we're meeting the exact standards, and that's how we're teaching, and that's how we get the credit. So, again, it's very transparent what we're teaching and what we're expected to teach, and that is transferred to parents, okay? Whenever any parent has a question, I think they see me in the community, so they know who I am, but I always sit down with parents and say, "Okay, you have concerns over X, Y, and Z, let's look at the PowerPoints I'm choosing, let's look at what I'm doing, and if you still have concerns, let me know." And in all of those situations, they're like, "Really?" I'm like, "Yeah." And so, it's just a conversation that we have that kind of dispels myths about the CED in AP Psychology. So, on a ending note, we actually had the opportunity this summer to attend a summer workshop. Every time there's new CED, every summer, there's an AP workshop. And I think what differentiates Prior Lake teachers from other teachers is we attend it. It's of our own time, and this summer, the state of Minnesota decided to give us that for free. They sponsored it. So we had three teachers, Mrs. Cass and myself, and a teacher who doesn't even teach AP, but teaches the other psychology course, attend a full 40-hour week, kind of teaching us best practice, looking at the test, looking at what people do well, what people do different, and again, kind of updating for the new test, which will be this, this.
Well, thank you, both of you, for sharing that piece of the data set that we provided, but the additional context. And I think I can just say that that work started over 10 years ago with trying to remove barriers, and to be here and speak more specifically and share of how that really has come to fruition and impacted in a positive way our students. That was a story we wanted to do more than just share the data, so questions of you all.
I'll be sure then. No, I just want to say thank you. I think the most encouraging number there is the participation number. I mean, I, as a parent, have had kids go through the program, have not had anyone take your class, essentially, but also, and I just know what type of, like, everything you said about how it prepares them for college and everything is just so true, and the accountability. And I also think one thing to note is that when they go to PSEO up at Normandale, there is no accountability, there is no working with the parents, because you're off at a college campus, and that can be not so good for some students. And then, the last piece I want to say is, oh my gosh, I'm sitting here having my own anxiety, because we all have to sign up for that AP test, right?
October 31st.
Yeah, so thank you.
Might be on my board several times.
So I'm sitting here the whole time going, "Oh my gosh, I have to do my sign up." Thank you for the reminder.
Yeah, really. Okay, I do have one question. These numbers are astounding, and something we should definitely celebrate, and I'm glad we are here doing that now. And I love everything you shared, and it's all very impressive. My one question is, I do believe that under the AP standards, right, there are certain levels of distinction kids can achieve through scoring a three, a four, or five. So you have, you know, I'm sure there are kids at Prior Lake High School who have gotten fives on multiple tests, and so they have a certain level of distinction. Do we recognize that in any way? Like, because I've never seen it, I'm not saying we don't, I just never have seen it having kids come through.
I think we recognized on social media this year.
So we did, and our communications department came to the high school, we invited, there's three levels of distinction, and don't quote me on this right now, but it's like, the highest level is have passed, I, don't quote.
We call it super heroes.
Three to five exams with a score of something. So we collected the three groups. Now, I put out a message, please come during Laker time, when you don't have to be there, to take a picture you probably don't want to take. So we didn't get everybody to show up, but we did have a core group, and our communications people did a great job of taking high-quality pictures, and then we added it into the, I don't remember the name, but the parent newsletter that goes out to highlight, because like, these are significant accomplishments.
They're huge, yeah, they're absolutely huge.
It was a couple little pictures, and then we listed their names, and parents love to see that. Kids, like, do a great job of recognizing state participants and things like that. And like, some of these kids are phenomenal academics, and so, you know, and have worked really hard in the classroom, so it was just one more way to say like, like, "Look at what we're doing, look what these kids are doing."
We'll see how many of them we can get for upcoming Laker pride.
Yeah, well, it's a feather in the cap for, you know, for the high school and the district, so, and the kids, it's incredible.
Yeah, and I'll just, you know, Mr. Thorpe, well, thank you for sharing this information, and I also want to just kind of tie it back to a conversation earlier. When we're talking about overall assessment data, look at the disconnect that we're talking about, just within our own system. So, if kids are tracking at the levels that we showed earlier, yet are growing in their magnitude of competing at the AP level, something's not aligned. And this is the, I mean, just looking within our own, are we measuring what matters, and are we doing it appropriately? That can't be true while this other reality holds true, something's not clicking. And so, I really appreciate how you all are recreating the culture of academic press, whether I'm going off to college or not. What we are finding, and you all could attest to this, when learning is relevant and it matters to our young people, they're full on it. And one of the things that we were discussing just this past summer was the 11th grade ACT, I'm sorry, the 11th grade ACT juxtaposed to the MCA, and how that, there's, there's no, there is little value to many of our students, and correct me if I'm wrong, because we were talking at the state of 11th graders, when they know what matters most to them is the ACT. They're not, they're not choosing colleges based on an MCA score. So the participation rate is plummeting, and it's just another example of, okay, if we're going to have that, fine, is that an appropriate setup for our kids? They're opting out, because they're going with what's more relevant to their learning and what matters for what their goal is. And so I think that's part, you know, part of our recent change-maker hub, with engaging with our kids to understand, what does education need to become for us to be more relevant and responsive to you as young people and as learners? And you saw this in my Friday's Five, like, I was blown away by just listening sometimes, like, okay, I just kind of need to get out of the way sometimes, and let these kids soar. So I think as an industry, this also just kind of solidifies the points that we were making earlier, but also just demonstrates phenomenal practice. And it's not by luck, I know you were just tongue-in-and-cheek-in, our staff are rocking it, okay? Our staff are so prepared to connect with our kids, to get the results that our kids demand and are desiring. So thank you, and all of our colleagues who are, you know, doing that work, particularly at the AP level that we're focusing on tonight, but just in general, you know, we heard from several of our staff tonight that are putting in thousands of hours collectively to ensuring they are doing what is best for our kids, so, so thank you both.